All right, we do have nine o'clock. Looks like our board chair is a little late. We'll make him buy lunch, I guess, later. So we'll get this meeting going here. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll rise for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to add quick, we do have a notice of participation via interactive technology. Commissioner Waldham is attending the meeting from, looks like Quality Inn 1505 Hillview Drive, Hillsboro, Texas. And the location is open and accessible to the public, so. Get that out of the way. We will start with introductions. I am the vice chair Josh Moore, Commissioner District Two. And we'll go this way.
Matt Ludwig, Pine County Commissioner, District Five.
I'm Debbie Gray, Office Manager in County Administration.
Dave Minkie, County Administrator.
Terry Lovegren, Commissioner for District Three.
Caleb Henderson, I manage the Planning, Zoning and Solid Waste Department.
Terry Peterson, Jones' objection.
Ryan Fendell, IT Manager, Pine County.
Kevin Glass, Pine County Recreation Supervisor.
Devin Peterson, Probation Agent.
Terry Fossett, Probation Director.
Then it looks like we got JJ. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm JJ. Well, I'm Commissioner for District Four. Live up in terms like. Morning.
Morning, JJ. All right. Looks like, do you wanna, is Jackie on there?
Hi, Jackie Quivisto, Human Resources Manager.
All right. All right, well, thanks everybody for showing up today. I don't, if everybody's got the agenda in front of you, we'll just keep rolling through here. So we'll go to number four, solid waste update, so. He said we don't have to. So we'll just move on to the solid waste update. So Caleb, you taking it?
Ryan, is there a clicker? Would that be better? Good morning. So in November or December, I forget exactly when it was, the county board established ad hoc solid waste ordinance committee. We have this solid waste ordinance from 1990 that has aged gracefully, but now we are seeing some changes in statute as well as in the community, and it seemed worthwhile to revisit it. So the ad hoc committee was created. Terry O'Rourke from Eckerson Township and Terry Peterson were on it, as well as Heidi Cronig from MPCA. We had someone from the city of Sandstone, Elena, I forget her last name. She was, she's on staff there. Yeah, let me, well, it was mostly Elena. But then Commissioner Helen and Commissioner Ludwig also sat in those meetings. Elena, yeah. Yeah. So they've met a couple times, and we've kind of got through some material, but we're at a point where some conversations came up in those committee meetings that we really, as a committee, decided that they should be brought to the county board for discussion. So today's objective, we're gonna do kind of a briefing on the solid waste ordinance, kind of where we've gotten to, and then we're also gonna do a discussion of the solid waste management fee that the county board has adopted, as well as needs within business recycling. Oh, there we go. So the purpose of the solid waste ordinance, so this is kind of more the, just the update, because it's a, it's a big document. It's about 70 pages, and it's, if the day comes where someone wants to build a landfill in the community that one of you represent, you know, that's when we're gonna really be thankful that we put this policy in place to be prepared for some of those, some of those things, and some of the more day-to-day stuff as well. But the purpose of the ordinance is really to provide standards and duty for solid waste management, transfer stations, hauling, storing of solid waste. We're gonna, the purpose is to protect health and safety and welfare, prevent the spread of disease, prevent and creation, the creation of nuisances, et cetera. And these types of calls about nuisances and health and safety concerns are fairly routine. It's not every day, but it's probably every week that we would get a call about something like this. The neighbor's been out of town for six months and their garbage is attracting, people are dumping garbage on the, on the land, or whatever it would be. Those things come up. The neighbor has been burning garbage and we can smell it, and it's a nuisance to our neighbors. So also, the purpose is to uphold the minimum requirements established by the MPCA, as well as make use of some of the authorizations that the statute provides to counties. And then, like any ordinance, you always have to be able to have some teeth, so there's some enforcement capabilities in the ordinance. So the main documents of consideration, as we're kind of considering the whole thing, is there are certain statutes pertaining to solid waste that authorize counties to do work, as well as requirements. Counties must license solid waste facilities. And then the, the task is on us, is what exactly does that look like, and to what extent? And that's where this would live in this ordinance. We're also, we took into account our old solid waste ordinance, because we kind of, there's, not to completely throw yesterday's book, because I'm sure there was considerable thought that went into that as well. So we tried to stay cognizant of where are we making things more restrictive? Where are we kind of in alignment with the way things have always been? That type of thing. And thirdly, the statewide organization of solid waste administrators, so my counterparts throughout the state commissioned a model solid waste ordinance that counties can utilize, so we're not all having to start on square one. And so essentially, that's kind of what we did, was we worked with this and then kind of tweaked it from there. So here's, here's kind of the process of creating the ordinance that we've been working through. The committee met in December, and, and we weren't looking at ordinances really at that point. We were just kind of talking about topics, whether it be storing of garbage on property, whether it be hauling garbage haulers and kind of accessibility and recycling. So we kind of talked about the topics, and that really gave good input for staff to come up with a draft ordinance, which is what, which is what we did here. One of those, a few things kind of shined in here in the first meeting. One was that recycling, the committee was still interested in having recycling be much more voluntary. You know, in the, in the model ordinance, and in some communities, recycling is kind of imposed more as a requirement upon businesses or upon haulers to provide curbside recycling. And our committee chose that recycling, or kind of had a consensus, that recycling is not something that we necessarily want to achieve through regulation. Mandate, yeah. So that was one. And then also just, I think, some of the other things is just that the burning of garbage, the storing of kind of solid waste in public view, these are kind of pervasive issues that are, that we kind of got to get a hold of. That's, that's kind of what I took from the committee. And then, so we carried out a draft, we brought it back to them, and we got some edits, so we started fine tuning it. That was reviewed by the county auditor and the county attorney. This was kind of a course review. I have, in paging through the ordinance this morning, I know there's still typos in it, so. We don't have a final draft, but we've had eyes on it, and you are to be now kind of that third group setting eyes on it before ultimately we would go to public hearing with it as the goal. So county ordinance board provide feedback, and then we'll have final edits, and then we're hoping to achieve a, a public hearing where we could consider adoption of an ordinance. Any questions thus far? Keep rolling, okay. So just kind of, so we're on the same page. We achieve, there's much to be achieved through a solid waste ordinance, but there's also much to be achieved on that kind of, those interests, just through our programming. The state grants we receive, as well as our state solid waste management fee that collects revenues, that enables us to provide services for residents to be able to get rid of garbage and recycling. So we are fortunate to be a member of the landfill board, the Central Solid Waste Commission, and that they have, you know, cited a Hinkley Trans, a transfer station right in Pine County. Not all members of the Central Solid Waste Commission have a transfer station right in their county. So we're fortunate in that way, which, and that Hinkley transfer station is the primary and only commercial transfer station in the county. But back in 2019, we started working more just on residential accessibility by opening the Willow River in Pine City residential transfer stations, recycling centers. Two recycling centers in Bruno and Sandstone, household hazardous waste in Pine City, that was new in 2016. And then we've got a grant, and we're working on constructing one in Willow River, another seasonal facility that is scheduled to be under construction this summer, possibly open next spring. And lastly, we are fortunate that we have countywide access to private garbage haulers. So that's not something that not all rural communities have. So just to kind of understand what infrastructure is in place for folks. So unless there are any questions, we'll jump into the ordinance. And I left these slides, I didn't want to get into too much detail at this point, because ultimately, the second component where we have a little more discussion on the solid waste management fee and business recycling is, is a little bit higher on the priority list for today, but I do want to kind of bring you along on what's in this ordinance, so that if there are questions that come up, I, I think it was just this week that I had heard about a homeowner who had a, a complaint that would have fallen under this ordinance that I think reached out to a commissioner. So I think it kind of gives us a little bit of a frame of reference as we field those calls. So there's, you know, eight articles. Some of them more, the first three are a little bit more general about the implementation of the ordinance. But then there's a section on waste abatement, which some, this is where some communities have had higher restriction on requiring recycling, or requiring that yard waste be segregated and not go into the municipal landfill. Then there's also language on storage of solid waste on properties, processing and disposal. Things like burning and burying on your property are languages contained within those sections. Article five is a vehicle for imposing solid waste fees. And basically, we've left that in the draft unchanged, where we're based on, we already have language where the county board can impose solid waste management fee through resolution, and we've kind of incorporated that same language. Article six, hauler licensing provisions. So our 1990 ordinance required that we collect licenses from anybody who wants to haul garbage, and this is kind of its counterpart in the modern ordinance with a little bit more language. And then this article seven, very similarly, our 1990 ordinance required that if anybody wants to start a transfer station or a industrial waste or, or landfill, they would need a license from the board. But there was a lot of, a lot of tidbits in the, in the old language that kind of made it such that we basically weren't enforcing it or implementing it. We were not issuing licenses in those cases. So this is the counterpart to the modern ordinance, that it's still there, but it's got new and improved language that makes it a little more enforceable. And we also wanted a, a chance to look at that with fresh eyes. Is this something that we want to do? Because it's, it's currently on the books, but currently not being implemented. And the, the committee said, yes, we should have a system in place for doing that. And lastly, inspections, violation enforcement, how are we gonna, if, if someone is in violation, how will, how will we handle that? And then just a few, I pulled out a few tidbits. So of the eight articles, we're gonna start here on, on article four. It prohibits yard waste and recycling collected from generators from being placed in mixed municipal solid waste. So if you, if your hauler leads you to believe that they offer recycling service, that, and you, and you go through the effort of recyc, putting it in the recycle bin out at the end of the driveway, it's got to go in the recycling and cannot be re-entered into a garbage stream. It provides limitations on solid waste storage tailored to residential sites, commercial sites, agricultural sites. And, and that's one where I think we had a great bit of discussion on. But as many ordinances are complaint-driven, the committee felt that it was wise to keep that language in there. It tends to overlap a little bit with zoning, so we're also conscious of that. And a lot of the communities have blight and nuisance restrictions. So there may be some duplicity, but in some cases, duplicity is helpful, because not every township is equipped to handle those concerns that come up. So it provides us ability to partner with those townships and cities where needed, and essentially pick up some of those violations and pursue them. Section 2.03 requires property owners to hire garbage service or self-haul garbage to a licensed facility. So storing it on your property, burning it, is not an option. Section 3.08 prohibits onsite burning and disposal, so it kind of reinforces the concept. But what I did this morning was I made myself a pot of coffee, and I got up an extra 45 minutes early, and I read through this language. And at some point, when we, when we get to a, or even before we would get to a, a public hearing, I would encourage you to, to have a similar cup of coffee, and if there's specific language that you would have concerns about, or even if you reflect upon some of the calls you've had or seen in your own community, we can see those as kind of real-life examples of, okay, well, how would that fit into this ordinance? So I'd be happy to work through those with you. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question. Caleb, on that section 1.02, I'm struggling a little bit with what that means. Does that mean myself as a household cannot put recyclables in my garbage can?
It does not.
Okay. I wanted to make sure.
It means, and we had a discussion about that, because sometimes people see a, a truck that they know has been at their place picking up recycling, go to the transfer station and dump it. And so then the phones light up. They're not, they're not offering recycling. But something in that load might have contaminated it as they're, as they're loading, they notice a garbage can full of dirty diapers. Or whatever. They, they might dump it on the floor if they got a sorting facility themselves and figure out that this is garbage, it's not recycling. And it kind of contaminates either the whole load or part of the load. But what we're saying, if you're offering recycling services, then that recycling stuff you pick up on Wednesdays or whatever your recycle day is, needs to go to a Murph someplace.
Thank you.
Yeah, if the homeowner goes through the work of putting it recycling, putting it out there, don't mix it.
Any other questions?
The other, that, I don't know if people have questions, but the, the storing of solid waste by, I think it happens sometimes with, with people that have road. They dump the stuff on a, on a site, and they reload boxes, and sometimes they don't get them reloaded that day. It might be, it might be a long time. And so if they aren't, if they don't have a facility that's licensed for that, then they, they're really not following the law or the rule that we have. That kind of the conclusion we came to.
Yeah. There was one anecdote of, there was an operator who was tearing down houses in the winter time, and all of the material was just coming back to his yard and dumped on the ground. And of course, the neighbors weren't too excited, and that would be a situation where he was treating it as a transfer station, but didn't have, had, wasn't pulling a license for it.
I have, I have a question, Mr. Chair. So on the recycling, it was decided not to have it so that you, you need to recycle them, that there would be the bins, you know, like you'd see in the metro areas. Was there a determination as to what the cost would be if we did do that in Pine County? We're so rural that I think it would be really hard, but just curious.
Terry, it's a good, great question. And, and you know, I remember, I remember the discussion we had with the hauler, and, and Matt Bloom was the one that he was sitting at table in Sandstone and said, "We have a hard enough time convincing people to pay the, whatever it is to haul our garbage, and if we gotta charge three more dollars to haul their recycling, we won't have a customer." Then where does their garbage go?
The ditch.
And so whether or not, I think, I think the question then, Terry, becomes, do we, do we as a county say we're gonna subsidize haulers to pick up that recycling? Because we think it's that important, and maybe we have to put a fee on every piece of property like we do. We gotta increase that fee. I, I think that's the discussion we need to have later on. Those are the great questions.
Yep. That's exactly where I was hoping some of this conversation will go as we get further in the slides. So the solid waste management services charge authorizes the county board to impose a solid waste management fee. The annual fee is set by resolution. The fee is used, so currently we have that in place. The fee is used to fund the hazardous waste facility, overhead expenses at our residential transfer stations, and the county recycling contract with Cloquet Riverside Recycling. So that's already in place. There could be enhancements of that effort, which is kind of the conversation to be had. Article six, hauler licensing provisions. The, the main things in there are, you know, do you have adequate insurance, automotive, liability, workman's comp? What are the hours of operation? And understanding, again, this is a state model solid waste ordinance. So there's some stuff in here that maybe we haven't experienced as problems, but other communities have. So it, it's wrapped into the model. So in other words, so you're not out there at 5:00 a.m. backing up a garbage truck down an alley, that type of thing. Leak-proof containers, the frequency of dumping, so you're not creating, you know, habitat for vermin and whatnot. And prohibited wastes, you know, that their haulers aren't picking up hazardous waste and stuff like that. So a lot of that's embedded in statute as well, but it kind of provides a little bit of local enforceability to partner with the state. So those are some of the main things under that article. Article seven, so facility requirements and licenses. So this requires facility licenses for solid waste facilities and recycling facilities. So we are required by the state to license solid waste facilities. We are not required to license recycling facilities. The committee felt that it would be worthwhile for the county to do that. So it's in the draft at this time. Tire facilities are another one, that's if, if someone's recycling tires. Provides minimum standards for said facilities. Things like, the county can impose financial assurance. So someone wants to start a landfill, make sure that they have the, the financial wherewithal to to close it, and it doesn't kind of get dumped on the public. Planning and zoning approvals, if you want to start one of these facilities, we have a check in place that you'd kind of have to have whoever that local zoning authority have their approval. Provide a state certificate of need as applicable. The state doesn't just authorize landfills willy-nilly, right? Isn't that really what the, Heidi, the certificate of need is, creating a case that the market exists and that need is there?
Mr. Chair, Caleb, that's correct. We have to make, make a determination based on a pretty long sheet that they have to fill out. Mr. Chair, Caleb, we have a pretty long sheet that they have to fill out, or a record that they have to fill out that justifies why they want this landfill and what the need is. And they have to actually have counties designating specific amount of waste to that facility, so there's justification. So you're right, and we're, we're looking at a couple of pretty big cases right now, so we're really scrutinizing that as well.
Great. So it kind of wraps it into part of the overall package that you're fulfilling all government requirements. Record keeping, litter control, fire safety, adequate loading areas, so trucks aren't backing up on the highway, visual screening, things like that, that kind of make sure that if someone's gonna start one of these, that they're having a solid plan that's not gonna be a negative impact on the community. Any questions on that? Okay, that was, and then the last, I guess, the, the last article was enforceability. And I didn't make a slide on it, because it's a little bit more of the how and not the what. But I guess that, that's the briefing on the solid waste ordinance, and I, I could have gone into much greater detail, but I, ultimately, we are hoping to have a little more discussion on the solid waste management fee. So I was slight, slimmer on this section. Anything else on the solid waste ordinance?
I have a question, Caleb, if I can.
Sure.
I guess I'd be interested in looking at the enforceability portion, if you can, maybe get something.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You'd like, should I, I can send you some information over email? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, no, that'd be, yeah, correct. That'd be great. Not, not, I don't want to slow down your meeting though. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So here's what we know. Solid waste management fee. In 2015, the county board amended the solid waste ordinance to establish the solid waste management fee as the state authorizes the county to do. The fee at that time was $6 per improved parcel per year, and we were using it exclusively for the household hazardous waste facility, which we didn't have prior to 2016. We increased it to $8 in 2019. We, we had an escalating contract price through phase for our recycling program, and we wanted to keep that program in place. We needed a little more funding to do so, and that's how we funded it. Then it was increased to $10 in 2020 to accommodate the overhead expenses of the new residential transfer stations, North Pine and South Pine. So those transfer stations are collecting user fees, tipping fees, that, that are, are pretty equivalent to our disposal costs. But the, the overhead fees are, are not quite covered. So when we, when we were kind of designing those programs, it was in my head that it would be really sweet if these programs could collect enough fees that they were, they could stand on their own two feet. And so we, we increased our prices a little bit, that homeowners would pay in order to kind of, kind of achieve that goal. But then there's a, a different philosophy that some counties use, such as St. Louis County. That, where we are. So in St. Louis County, they have an $85 fee, and basically, they want to substantially subsidize drop-off of materials. So that the homeowner, really, the, the price is not an issue. If you have tires to get rid of, it's already paid for, and you just bring them to the transfer station. So it's kind of a different philosophy is, is saying we are gonna pay for these through tax collection and not tipping fees. But at the end of the day, we're gonna have less stuff showing up on the roadsides. So I, I guess, and, and they have a number of transfer stations, and actually, we kind of, I I toured a bunch of them. That's kind of how we dreamed up the North Pine and South Pine transfer stations by seeing what they have. Because they're similar that they have a huge rural geography where, you know, it it affects. The ability to have curbside recycling, so they need recycling of, you know, drop centers like we do. And also haulers aren't aren't the the rate of hauling isn't the same as it would be near a city.
Mr. Chair, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so how how do we do the parcels? Does every parcel pay that fee that's a taxpayer or is it just a dwelling? I can't remember.
If I may, so it's each improved parcel. So even if they have just a lawn shed on it, they are paying the. The assessment, but not but not exempt parcel. So not your churches or your schools or things like that.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. So then. Do you have a number in your head? Like the what, how you're functioning now? What is the number we have to get so it can so they don't have to pay if they just show up there?
No, I don't. We could, we could work towards it.
As I was looking over this material last week, my my question is, have we done a. Has anybody done an analysis of keeping the environment clean? You know, the state forests, the road ditches. Us versus counties that. People already paid the fee and and so now it's just a matter of not being so lazy. That they can make it all the way to the transfer station. Because it's already paid for.
I'm not familiar with like a study that's been done.
Is the county road crew say, you know, since we did that, we just. We just don't have stuff laying in the ditches anymore.
I know we still, we definitely still have the issue. I don't know whether it was a noticeable change when we opened our transfer stations.
No, I'm saying if if it was completely, if we charged a fee of fifty dollars, a hundred dollars. And so it didn't cost anything to come in and drop off stuff. Those counties that do it like Saint Louis County. Is there, are there ditches a lot cleaner than Pine County? So that's my question.
It's a great question. I think that's worth looking into if we would go down that road. One that comes to mind is actually just got a call yesterday, railroad lane. Just beyond behind the transfer station. It's it's a dump road and it's. And they're, the people are willing to drive it adjacent to the transfer station. But if they came right around the corner, they could bring it through the actual facility and. So I I would say that would be a case where that should alleviate that issue.
Gosh. Um, so with this, does this cover commercial?
The the it it could, however you structure it, you you'd have that ability. My understanding is that Saint Louis County, this is a residential program.
And then so then does the charge just go on residential or does it go on?
No, it's every improved parcel.
Right now, it's every improved parcel.
Okay.
But you could make a decision to have it different.
Okay, either way, and and my question is, is what would be the fear of adding commercial? I realize you got some industrial in or something. I don't, that would be the only thing.
I think quantity.
Yeah, and. Yeah.
I can't believe somebody's driving down to the transfer station and dumping it there. I think they go in there. This is just a guess. I realize I gotta pay for it and I go, no. They think they can.
That's what I think too and then they and then they go, I'm not taking it home with me.
Right, that that's what that's what's happening because they they're gonna spend that gas just to.
Could be. That railroad lane, that's a ongoing. It's a perennial issue that. I don't know. Maybe it's all.
Every community has a, you know, Freedom Road just outside of Pine City is the same. It gets everything.
Yeah.
So does the government.
One of the other things, Josh, is that our recycling centers or our North Pine and South Pine Transfer Station operate under permit by rule. Which we're under a certain amount of volume. There's a threshold, which if you operate under that threshold. The permitting through the state is much simpler and. We've been able to do that by having some limitation on how much volume comes in, partly just the. The administering the per permit requirements. If if we made the leap to get to the higher level permitting, it would require quite a bit more staff time. And and expense. It's something that could be considered, but it's that's one of the benefits of kind of right sizing the program. So it's pretty simple to administer those two transfer stations.
And all this is available for fee at the transfer station, right?
Right.
So.
Which we subsidize if you're resident already, right?
Right. But is it subsidized if you're? If it is, or you just don't say you're commercial? Like, I know I tried bringing some stuff over to the. To the transfer station here and it and it was from our business. They wouldn't accept it, which is fine. But that was, that was kind of the thing is, I don't know, but then so then you gotta haul it up there and and that's fine. It's a lot closer for me than it is other people, but. I don't know. The thing that does kind of bother me is if you're gonna pay the fee, you can't use it. You know, so I don't know. I guess.
We've had this discussion a lot, but see the household that has this waste isn't really talking about. That's a separate thing, you know, the paint.
Under the same fee.
Yeah. Versus the garbage, but we kind of talked about the garbage being connected at one time too. We just had that discussion like some. Do that too slowly, but then you get in, are we competing with garbage haulers? How do you get work that?
Yeah, I I'm just saying.
I think the household hazardous waste has to stay separate.
It's a fair argument. It is ten dollars a year, on the other hand, but if you were gonna look at increasing it like this, then it becomes. An increasingly important discussion, right?
Yep, and and like with it now, it isn't, it isn't usually too big a deal. You know, if you're bringing in a couple cans of paint, typically they don't even ask you.
It's the mattresses. Or anything like that. TVs and then refrigerators, that's stuff that gets kicked out.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
I think the tires too, isn't it?
Tires.
Tires are huge.
Tires and mattresses are the worst.
I don't know what you do with tires either because. You know, it'd be nice to have the free, but I can see that getting severely abused.
Somebody's gotta come up with an invention of what what's the end game for a tire, like, you know? Other than grinding them up and making. Roadbed material out of them, but doesn't seem to work in all such, you know.
How do we, how do we get a number on our household has this waste? How do we do that? We know what we spend now, right?
Yeah.
How much we subsidize on on those kind of items?
On on tires and stuff, yeah, we we know. We know that.
And then we know.
We subsidize tires by twenty, like an automobile passenger tire. Our disposal cost is two dollars and twenty five cents and we're charging two dollars. So we're only subsidizing by twenty five cents.
Okay.
Hazardous waste, we subsidize one hundred percent. We don't charge people. So I I don't know. I think this has been. Some good brainstorming, but I think. If we we could, and and ultimately, I don't think we're gonna arrive at a decision, but maybe if if there's specific research like. Like Steve had mentioned, maybe that's the direction it needs to go where.
I think add Terry's question in there. If if we. I'm trying to try to paraphrase it here, but if we offered recycling to every. Customer in Pine County that was on a garbage route. What would that cost to subsidize recycling?
And you're talking curb side recycling?
Yeah, I get curbs once a month, curbside, single sort recycling because. Because the company I have. Works in also in Shisago County and they're required to do it there. And so. When their route comes up in the southern Pine County, they they just offer the same thing. It's just easier for them. But I think all the haulers north of Pine City don't offer it.
So do they have a separate truck, a cleaner truck then?
No, they wash out a garbage truck. So it's picked up with a side loader, garbage truck.
They don't mix it in the truck. It's a separate.
No, it comes on a whole separate day and they take it. They have a licensed floor. And they reload it in the semis and take it to a Murphy, where is that Blaine or someplace.
So what would that do to our haulers that don't do it now? They would have to add what?
They'd have to add another, the way they do it, they add another route, but once a month.
So if they have a big rope for garbage, they're gonna, that's a lot. That's a big expense, right?
Yeah, and that, what would it cost? Would it cost three dollars a month per customer, five dollars a month? I don't know. I think. I think ours is they tack on three bucks a month. I don't know if that covers covers the total cost. I don't know. We could ask one of those followers.
Interesting.
I think of the problem that we have with broadband because we're so far away from everybody that that's gonna be a problem for this too, but it would be a nice. Solution to help take care of the recycling.
One, one other thing is that yesterday at the at the solid waste meeting, we. We are in the process of hiring an assistant that might work into the full time director when Janelle retires. But the guy that we're offering this job to has a long history of working with. With. Landfills. One of the things he mentioned is, you know, for every pound of. Or ton of material we keep out of the landfill, we save a ton of space. So they institute where he is now, they instituted a glass recycling. I don't know how many thousand tons of glass they get in a year, but a lot. And they took up a program where all the glass bottles that used to just get thrown in the trash are now recycled. And they actually have developed the market for it. So instead of them, it costing them. Their first, they just broke even. They're really happy with that, but now they they actually are getting twenty dollars a ton or something for it. So they're they're making it worth their while. So. I I think we'll have, if he accepts the job, we'll have an ally of somebody that's got vast experience with different programs.
That'll help.
Yeah.
So. Kind of adjacent to this is the business recycling. Issue where when we were, we had a contract with Faze for recycling. We didn't realize at the time that they were subsidizing business recycling through that. They were recycling, picking up business recycling for like five bucks a month, which is well beneath. You know, operating cost and funding it basically through our recycling contract. So when that went away. A lot of businesses, there was, there was new options, Cloquet Riverside Recycling, your local hauler, but it was a major cost increase. So we we've lost a lot of business recycling. So one of the things that came up at the committee was. How can we kind of help? Get those businesses recycling again and. We've, we've got a new, a few ideas. One is, you know, could we open up our recycling transfer stations? To small businesses, which is basically what Josh was asking for. And depending on, there could be, it could be fully funded through solid waste management fee. Otherwise, it, there could be a user fee for a commercial account or whatever it was. But that'd be one way to help facilitate and and there are, there's a lot of businesses that are small businesses that are willing to haul their recycling. But the heavier generators probably are not, they're not gonna be hauling it to a transfer station.
Where's it going now? Garbage then?
A lot of them. Yeah, there were a number that decided to stop recycling, small bars, things like that. Um, so we could also adopt through ordinance. So that's why a little bit we want to have this conversation at the same time as ordinance conversation. We could adopt requirements that commercial haulers in cities over some threshold. Where there's a little more population density and business density must provide curbside recycling to commercial accounts. That could be partially subsidized through the management fee or not. So where we we've talked about what would be the cost to have kind of organized. Curbside recycling, business, starting with businesses might be a way to. Just kind of dip your toe in the water on that where you can kind of keep it a little more finite and manageable and and and. Assist those businesses that are kind of underserved now and kind of get it a lay of the land for whether it could work on a broader scale. And and the third bullet point there is that so many of the haulers have unique situations for how they get rid of their. Recycling, those that do haul or what their routing looks like, where their. What what their density of accounts is and actually I I had a specific hauler kind of. Catch wind of this conversation and call me and said that, you know, he could put together a proposal to offer. Curbside recycling to businesses at some fee. Similar to kind of through through contract, kind of like in Pine City. They do their own licensing of haulers and they have negotiated the terms of those licenses and and some of those are that you have to provide. Recycling within the city of Pine City. So this this hauler who approached me said we could apply that same principle. And in it for the northern half of Pine County to get anybody who wanted and and either it could be fully funded through county. Or there could be a user fee that covers, so they got skin in the game. So. It would, he had a pretty intriguing pitch on it and that's where I thought, well. Our haulers all have kind of unique abilities within their infrastructure and staffing. Where maybe a request for proposals would could really arrive at some type of potential contract that could move the needle. In a way that worked for everybody. So that's, I guess that's kind of a concept I'm interested in where. If there's a local hauler who's not doing recycling, but really under the right conditions in a contract, maybe he he or she could. They would have the same fair opportunity to produce a proposal. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and and maybe a combination of a of. So the, so the business owner had a little bit of skin in the game.
Yep.
And the county has some skin in the game and they they seem to work better when everybody has some skin in the game.
Agreed.
No, no, just a thought with that, do you do it skin in the game in the form of a special assessment fee? Or where they would, they would pay the hauler a separate fee?
Well, I am not smart enough to know that yet.
Because I think if you're gonna get participation, you kind of just do it as a fee. Is that something you could do?
Yeah, I think in the resolution, you could. Put the language that the commercial properties will have X V.
Okay.
And all other improved properties will have X V.
Okay. Or as a part of, you just do that one fee at the certain price where.
Right, because right now the commercials are paying the ten dollar special assessment fee, but really.
Which it's ten dollars, which is eighty nine dollars, really much more, not.
I don't know, you wouldn't believe the calls we got between eight and ten.
But I'm just saying maybe. If you raise that to eighty five across the board. Commercial, you can't take it here, but this is what we're offering you. I don't know, maybe it's enough, maybe it's not enough. I don't, I'm just throwing it out there. Because like you said, five bucks a month, how many people dropped off? So if it is anything more, there would probably be a lot of people that drop off and or it just.
I think their skin in the game should be paid by them. And in a sense that they see it monthly or whatever they even know.
Well, that's what we're saying with that, with that fee though.
I get it, but see they can't say, no, I wanna out, then they're still paying the fee.
Yeah.
But what if they wanna opt out?
But if they have to pay the fee, why would you?
And we'd have to mandate the. Process, right?
Well, but if you do, the fee covers it.
I get, I get that, but you.
I don't know why you wouldn't.
Yeah.
You could make it pretty complicated, but trying to keep it simple.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we can keep competition between haulers and.
Fee. But every, every commercial business generates recycled. Fee, but every, every commercial business generates recycled bowls at a much different rate. And so you know, you probably generate a lot of cardboard.
Yeah.
And, and uh, Scott's muffler probably doesn't generate Italy squad, you know, but there's still a commercial business.
So we have, Terry, can I ask you a question from Jones's? Can, would, do you feel comfortable at answering that? Okay, so you guys have a business and I'm assuming that you have like a lot of tires. Um, that's one of the things in a lot of parts. So what would you feel would be a good way to do this? Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that.
Well, we clean up stuff, we uh, we're allowed to put five tires in each car that goes out for recycling. So a lot of tires go that way, but if we're doing a cleanup like we are today, uh, it's so much tire, five bucks tire. And then we, once we get so many, if we can't get rid of them in cars, then we take them, okay?
Okay, but how would you feel about the, the charging? If, you know, if we were to put like an eighty-five dollar fee on your taxes, or would you rather pay the garbage hauler or, you know?
I would rather pay the one-time fee. I'd much rather, I was curious of how much money is generated from that ten dollars off each parcel.
Right now, it's about a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Peanuts. I mean, I, I was reading eighty-five dollars up there, I wouldn't. Okay, with township, we spent ten thousand dollars three years ago cleaning up the township and it costs, every bit of that ten thousand cleanup. And that all was paid through taxpayers too, off a levy for Blake, and we're talking about doing it again. So we're going to have the same cost, if not more, to do it again this year. So I mean, eighty-five dollars really ain't nothing. And you're gonna, Kelly, you're gonna get phone calls, but I would much rather pay, I'd, I'd pay a hundred dollars a month for a year, whatever my taxes. Just me speaking personally, but from the township view, for the amount of trash we get in the township too, and the jobs we clean up through Jones, it's nothing.
In, in like what we were talking, would, do you think it would be better doing the assessment, like for the business, just doing the assessment or you pay a little extra?
Assessment, yeah.
There's really no reason for somebody not to do it. If they have to pay an extra eighty-five dollars a year, they're probably not going to do it, you know, so.
Yeah, it's, it's really in the big scheme of things, really nothing.
I think if they have to pay it on a special assessment, or they know that they paid it on a special assessment, then they're going to be more apt to use it than well, I have the opportunity to pay this extra or not.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Yeah.
It's just that.
So I know there's a lot of counties that in Northwest Minnesota especially, that pay you know, roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a year for solid waste assessment under taxes. And when they, that's not for curbside service. That's whatever you want to take to the town hall that has dumpsters there, you take there. There's still a mess, uh, uh, cause I've taken stuff from, from my folks and they were like, you go down there to big fenced in area. Big sign says, put everything in the dumpster. There's a. You know, but.
You're right, you can't fix.
At least it's piled in one spot. And it appears like the bitches are cleaner. But then if you live in a community and you want curbside service, and I don't know how they, Caleb would have to do some investigation if they just pay the difference in curbside service and the hauler gets, you know, David?
I, Beltrami County, when I lived there, had a system like that. And so if you want a curbside pickup, you paid, you contracted with a hauler, but you were just paying the cost of that truck going out and picking up your garbage, you didn't have to pay the tipping fee.
Right. So, so instead of your garbage bill be at twenty-five dollars a month, it might be ten or fifteen because you're just paying for the service.
That might be something to look at because it gives you the option, if you, if you don't have the accessibility to take it to the junkyard or, you know, to the recycling or whatever, um, then you could have them come and pick it up at your house.
Yeah, that would keep the competition.
And it would keep the haulers alive, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, and I don't know.
They might gain business.
Yeah, this, just kind of a perspective, the city that I live in now charges three dollars and ninety-eight cents per month solid waste fee for recycling. And every hauler must pick up recycling. And so whoever I want to contract with for my garbage, they pick up my recycling, but there's a backend payment from the city for doing that to cover their costs.
Is it free from the hauler then? Or do you?
Yeah, you just contract whoever you want for garbage pickup. And then they pick up recycling every two weeks.
Okay.
And you don't pay for it?
Not directly.
Yes.
He's for that, it's taxes.
Three dollars and ninety-eight cents a month.
But you don't have a choice in that.
No.
I got something with your chair if I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I could see some of these comparisons to county of course, but you know, like Dave, for example, his county, if it's three ninety-eight, is that three ninety-eight? Per person, per parcel again, per household? I mean, you know, you start working these numbers. I know ours wouldn't be three ninety-eight, we don't have the population compared to, of course, for some reason, you know?
Couldn't, a hauler, a hauler couldn't do it for three ninety-eight.
No.
Got to drive between stops, but it, it's a, the model is there.
Yeah, right. And I think it always falls back on enforcement. I mean, if we can't enforce what's going on now, you know, we can start something new, of course. Yeah, I don't want traction to garbage either, but I mean, and unfortunately, yeah, we really got a little bit of enforcement for, enforcement we proposed. And I myself, yeah, I, I got cardboard and a lot of it. Um, also have residential and we're also involved with farming, but I guess we, we take care of it. We, we have a cardboard bin that our uh, our personal sanitation company takes, uh, and it recycles and uh, if we're not making the decision today, right, this is right now, still going to be looking at stuff for the enforcement to.
We're just.
Yeah. A lot to look at, lots to look at, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
You got enough to work on for a while?
Yeah. We can run with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just to clarify the end game that Caleb is working towards, do you see another like committee of the whole type discussion where he does some follow-up with some of the ideas? Or is there the ad hoc committee still in, in functioning?
I like the, I like the committee because these guys know the issues better than we do, that they've worked in that industry or they live in the communities. We might have to work at the committee level for a couple of meetings and then maybe I think we got time. I, I mean, I don't think this is something that we think has to be done by me first. I think I would rather come back to a committee of the whole meeting, flesh out some of the things we've talked about today, we'd have some answers for, then we could have a discussion. Then we could possibly go from there with a public hearing. Cause I think what, whatever we do, if we're going to make a difference, is going to be very, it's going to look different to people. If it's, if it's a drastic change in a fee that we charge, if it's a mandate that we give to haulers, if it's whatever it is, it's going to be different. And so we want to try to get it as close to right the first time as we can.
Yep.
We're never going to get anything perfect the first time, but I, I think we can think we had some good discussion today and I think we can flush some of that out and with staff time and, and a, at least one or two meetings with uh, if the committee is, the committee is willing to hang in there for a couple more meetings. That's what I'd like, and I think that, I think that would work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caleb, and thanks to the committee for being here today and for coming to the meetings. It really helps us because you give us a perspective that we don't have. People sitting on the board. Thanks. Laurie, are you ready for property value updates?
Yes.
Thanks, Caleb.
Thanks, Caleb.
So I've been giving the phone calls on taxes too, and my nephew went to look at a house in Maple Grove. It would be like three thousand square feet, four bedrooms, three bathrooms, just a basic home for down there, starting at three million dollars. That's why our values have increased. Those are the ones that are buying our houses up here. Have you seen that though, where you are?
I think we could give them more choice.
I know, we get, I get that too, but.
They want to just self-off? Then they would.
I don't know if we're going to have a chance, but. Just the number or? Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll tell you or email. You don't want to see the whole thing. Oh, okay, that's.
So Laurie, how has your ear been lately? Kind of red?
Been crazy.
Yep.
We just started our meetings um, yesterday. You know, I think what people feel is they see a forty-eight percent increase and they feel their taxes are going to go up.
Exactly.
That's the biggest.
Yes.
So we just need to explain how it works and then I don't know if a lot of people believe, but it would, it would really come down to next year when they get their tax statements.
So you started your meetings yesterday. Have you had a lot of people, I mean, normally nobody shows up. Have they been coming this time?
Uh, so I attended two um, yesterday. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Laurie Howitzman. The county assessment recorder. Um, our local board of appeal and equalization meetings began yesterday. I attended Wilma and Arlone. And uh, along with the local appraiser and um, our deputy Troy Stewart attended uh, Kettle River and Del Grove. Del Grove didn't have anyone come. Kettle River had three. And I would say I probably had five.
The two?
Uh, five each.
Oh, okay.
And so right now, um, they are finishing up Rock Creek and as of nine o'clock when the meeting started, there were two people there. So that was good. Uh, I really think we're going to see more though. I mean, we have certain townships that generally more people come to today. They're at Rock Creek and then he heads up to Berry. Uh, and then tonight at seven o'clock, I will be doing the Sandstone Township meeting, and that's usually a lively meeting or more people, more populated. Uh, so let's see here. So we'll get started here, um, put together a little presentation just to explain what's happening with our property value increases and the appeal process that people need to follow. So we're looking at when we say the two thousand twenty-two assessment, that equals taxes payable in two thousand twenty-three. I mean, we're going to start with evaluation process. Uh, the, it begins with data collection. So that's your appraiser for your township or your city. We do a physical review of properties once every five years, or if there's new construction present. When we do that physical review, we do like to do an interior review. The interior of your home is just as important as the exterior. If we can't see what's inside, we're going to make that extraordinary assumption, and that's not always to the property owner's benefit. Uh, many things go into how we, how we decide on the value, the square footage, the architectural style, the quality of the home, your interior and exterior details, your outbuildings, your use, of course, your use goes along with how we classify your property. Uh, so when that gets done, um, we look at qualifying sales uh, for taxes payable in twenty-three. Those sales need to fall between October first of two thousand twenty and September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Those need to be arm, arms-length transactions, which means we don't look at sales between relatives. We don't look at um, bank sales. So there's a number of sales we don't look at. Basically, think of stranger to stranger sale, a market, uh, a, a property that's been listed or put out on the market somehow. How do we determine our value from this? Well, according to the Department of Revenue, I've used the median sales ratio. So let's say that you had twenty sales in your township. The median is your middle number. So that's what we look at. Um, I have to fall when I'm done between ninety and a hundred and five percent. Not only for the entire county, we break it down per township and per city. And then within that township and city, we break it down on water and off water. There's different property types. We look at residential and seasonal, that's one property type. We look at rural vacant land and agricultural parcels that are both over thirty-four and a half acres. And over thirty-four and a half acres, we look at improved, and over thirty-four and a half acres, we look at unimproved. And then the rest of it that falls under thirty-four and a half acres. So there's a lot of different buckets that we have. When we get it all done, we have to fall within that ninety-two and a hundred and five percent. This is just a little breakdown for you to, to see where we started and where we ended up. Uh, so for apartments and commercial, we don't always see a lot of uh, big increases with our commercial properties. This year apartments did see some of those higher increases. You can see our preliminary ratio, we started at ninety-four point thirty-one percent. Um, and we did bring it up to ninety-nine percent commercial property overall. Uh, we were at ninety-four percent, again, sitting very well. It did go up to ninety-six percent.
Steve?
All right.
Yeah.
It is, what if there's zero apartments that sold in Pine County?
Right, we don't necessarily need to do anything, however, we do pay attention um, to what's going on around it, but apartments we did have, and as long as we fall somewhere in that median ratio, we don't necessarily need to do anything. But the Department of Revenue also does look at a five-year. So even though you may not have anything this year, if you've had a number of sales that qualify within the last five years, we have, that's why we want to make sure that we stay consistent throughout the years. You know, that would just be like, um, you know, you can have a township that didn't have any residential sales or not enough. I don't necessarily need to make it the change, but I try very hard to stay consistent, consistent with the surrounding townships. Because if you do nothing, and all of a sudden that year, like this year, you're going to get a number of sales and now you're sitting, we, we were sitting low enough, um, that we would have a state order and then that they would get hit extremely hard when no one else would. So that's why I really try to stay consistent through the townships. One sale doesn't make a market, but we're always watching. So when you look at here, what's happened with the market this year, our residential seasonal properties on and off, so this is combined. We started at seventy-three point fifty-seven percent. When I got done making my adjustments, we sat at ninety-two point fifty-two percent. I'm going to go into the coefficient of dispersion and the price-related differential when, once I run through these. Uh, residential seasonal, now we're going to have to break that down. So off-water, we started at six, a little over seventy-six percent. When I got done, ninety-three point seventy-one percent. Um, on water, that's even lower. That's, and um, that's popular right now. Everybody wants something on a lake or a river. Uh, we sat at sixty-seven point nineteen percent. And when I got done, we were at ninety-one point zero-three percent. Rural vacant land, greater than thirty-four and a half acres, the land is really selling sixty-six point ninety-three percent, uh, went up to ninety-three percent. Uh, and then improved over thirty-four and a half acres, seventy-one point forty-seven percent, went up to ninety-three point eighty-two percent. So basically, as you can see, when I got done setting values, I tried to stay in that ninety-one to ninety-three, ninety-four area. Now let's go to the coefficient of dispersion. What that means is the uniformity with your, with your individual ratios and how it compares to that median, median sales ratio that we use. So we look at the ratios above and below. And how do we look overall? If we have a low COD, that's great. They look typically at 15 and under. That's pretty good. If you are under 10, that's excellent uniformity. So when you look through the column of the coefficient of dispersion, you can see after I'm done, you know, I was happy with this crazy market that we fell below 15. But even when you look into the residential properties, we are sitting pretty darn good. You know, nine to 11%. The price related differential, that really looks at uniformity between your higher valued homes and your lower valued homes. So you want to make sure that when we're doing these studies and adjusting these values, that your higher homes aren't getting hit harder than your lower. So when you look at that, they say anything between 98, the Department of Revenue, I'm saying 98 to 103 or 9.98 to 1.03. And as you can see, when I'm done, yep, we're following right almost perfectly for most of those at the 1.0%.
Yeah.
So if I'm just looking at the rural vacant.
The rural vacant.
Yep. And you, you have your preliminary median ratio down there and it says that was 66.93.
Yeah.
What is that percent of market value?
That's where, that's where our median ratio fell. So that's where we were sitting before I started adjusting values according to what the sales.
So that's based on what, last years?
It, it's based on the sales that, well, yes, as of last year where we were sitting there.
We're in that range of the, where the state wants you there.
Nope.
How does that happen?
Every year I fall within that. But now, once we start this year and we look at all the sales because of the increasing market, now based on our values from last year for this year's increases, we're only at 66 points.
So we had that much land sale that were vacant land sale that drove that? So, so you were 66% before? Based on something?
Well, because let's say, let's say your 40 was valued at $1,000 an acre. And.
S ratio is.
1040 sold in your township for $1,500 an acre. Now your $1,000 an acre is out of whack by $500 an acre. So she has to raise that up.
Right. So yeah, and Kelly has a good point. Let's talk about where, how do we get to that 66? Well, your sales, it's your sales ratio. Yep. So you, what you do is you take your estimated market value that we started with or where we ended last year. And then we go ahead and divide that by the sales price that falls within that sales study. And when you do that, that's where we end up now. Because everything is inflated right now. So it drops our.
So essentially like on, on those 34 and a half acres, our value was only 66% of what they were selling for.
What the real.
We were undervaluing them by 34%.
Number you're looking.
On the new numbers.
Not the previous values.
It, that is on the previous values compared to the sale prices.
Yeah. That's why it's only 66%.
Right. And so then when she compares to the new sale prices or the new estimated market values is that final?
Yes.
Do, do, this last year, a lot of people refinanced.
Yeah.
I talked to a lot of people who told me, how long is it going to take the county to figure out how much the bank figures my place is worth? Because the bank came out and appraised it at way more than their tax statement says it's worth.
Right.
That's because they're way.
But, but that, so that doesn't count as a sale, does it?
No, no, that does not count as a sale.
And then on farmland, the land, the 40 or the 80 that's right next to Farmer Joe's place is a lot more valuable to that Farmer Joe than to anybody else. So is that a arm length sale even though they're not related or is that?
So I have not been looking at those types of sales because they are not listed. You've got a friend or a neighbor that you've known all these years that maybe was farming the land prior. And you know, you've kind of had this verbal agreement throughout the year that, hey, you know, when I'm ready to sell, you know, we'll work something out. That I do not look at that as an arms length transaction because it hasn't actually been put out and advertised basically. So I am not looking at those.
So when I bought my house, I bought that one and a half acre in the middle of an 80 and I wanted the 80 back. And so I paid more than what I probably should have paid for it because I wanted it. So I called Laurie and said, don't, don't count this, you know? And so that's not one of the good sales.
I, we did the same thing, Terry.
Yeah.
80 next to us came up for sale and, and we bought it because we could. But, but we paid way more than the market.
Because it was good for, yeah, it helped you.
Because we didn't want somebody to build a house right next. I mean, that's, I imagine it's an arm length sale, but it's, we played way more than value.
So you raised everybody else's value in the process?
Probably.
And I think the hardest thing for me was always that these sales that these are based on were done last year. You know, so they're like, you know, because they have to do the sales study in a certain period. So then what was done a year ago is what you're going to be seeing. So that's the fluctuation kind of changes so much because of that.
Right. And then when we have such an increasing or appreciating market, then we have to always remember that we look at January 2nd, 2022 for our assessment date. So then those, and we'll get to that side. We need to get that value brought up dependent upon when you purchased. So that's exactly what we're going to talk about now. Property assessment and appreciating market. I, this has all been sent out to you. I, I'm not going to read through each different line, but I'm going to show you the example on the next page. And when you look in the blue, it says, wait a second, I paid 300,000 for my home. And now you're saying it's worth 360,000? How is that possible? Very common with what we're seeing this year. The assessment date is January 2nd of each year. If the market appreciated, let's say 20% that year. And the purchase price was 300,000 in January of 2021. So as a reminder, we've got to bring it up to January 2nd of 2022. That would indicate a closer value of 360. So you're, what you're doing is 20% of that, that's where you would get to your 360 as of January 2022. But a purchase price of 330,000 in July of '21, so six months later, it's only going to appreciate 10%. Again, you're going to fall closer to that 360,000 mark as of January. So it depends on when the sale happened. And this is just a little graph showing you, you know, where it falls.
Yeah.
I, I have another question.
Yeah.
And it just, because I'm hearing this all the time. We kind of know with all the stuff happening in the metro, people were selling and moving. And it created a kind of an artificial sense in a way that they, they were willing, they were willing to pay or buy or whatever they did. But it's not really the true value of stuff in Pine County based on what the people that work here.
Well, this is.
Don't have the money that they came from. So I worry.
So this, but this is what I would say, the true value is actually what someone pays for that property. That's what I have to look at.
I know.
And so what I think their, their concern is, is that, okay, well, my value just went up, you know, 60%. Now you're going to, now my taxes are going to go up that much, but that's not true. But then, but that's what people think.
Yes.
So we, you know, we do need to explain to them, you know, as your value comes up, your, your tax rate or your mill rate comes down to meet those levies. But that's a hard sell until they actually see that happen. And you don't see that. You get your proposed tax statements late November. You know, your tax statements a year from now. But I understand their concern. But it's hap, it's not just here in Pine County. It's every, it's every county. It's throughout the state, throughout the country, I'm assuming. So we are all in this same market. Yes.
I think the tougher conversation, because we had this happen in 2008. I remember sitting up there and Mark LeBrun said, just wait till, we got somebody's house valued at 360. And now they tried to borrow money on it and the bank said it's only worth 300.
Yeah.
That's the tough.
That's what I'm worried about.
And, and this is what's going to end up happening, I feel. We're just beginning the real estate season. People are just starting to close again. Try to find whatever's out there. It's still a buyer's market. We have run some reports, but those are hard to, you know, from October through now. Some areas were sitting high, some were still sitting low. It's so hard to be able to tell you what's going to happen until I get through the end of September. But let's say the market starts coming down now again. Okay? You have to remember too, and be able to explain to people that we follow that market. So as the market, you know, right now we're following it. So market's up here, we're a year and a half to two years behind. Now the market starts coming down. Well, there's going to be that point now, we're going to be sitting up here before we can start. So people will be confused. I know the market's crashing. Why are you still saying that's because we follow? And there's always a year and a half to two year lag. So I really don't think it's ever going to be a pretty situation, but it, yeah. So our next slide.
Laurie, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
I sat in on a White House meeting on Friday and they were talking about the investors that are buying properties and they're talking about passing a law so that the investors can't buy all the properties so that we can have homeowners purchase it instead because they're keeping people from buying homes. How would that affect our sales?
It really comes down to if it's looked at it as a qualifying sale. So in our eyes, an investor could go ahead and purchase it as long as it was listed. It was put out on the open market.
Do we know like how many, how many of our sales are investors buying it or how many?
I guess I, I haven't seen a lot of that. You know, we, we always see those homes purchased and they're flipped. But usually when they're flipping those homes, they're buying them, they're remodeling or renovating it. And so only one of those sales are going to be a good sale. So that second sale, now we're going to be sitting a lot lower because we don't have that information. That's new construction. So we don't look at that sale. But the first sale, when they originally purchased it, most likely that is a qualifying sale. And of course.
Chair, I have a question. Sorry.
Go ahead, JJ.
I guess it kind of, it goes on with Terry's there with investors. You know, we evaluate the businesses, we evaluate all properties, whether it's, you know, houses or cabins or lake property, whatever. And they all base, they pay the property tax on that. Like now we're looking at all this fiber. I just have a question. How do the fiber companies pay property tax on their property, their equipment that they have in our, our ditches, our roadways? They could even own like a communication building sitting in downtown Pine City, Sandstone, Asko, whatever. You know, and then for, you know, our businesses pay their property taxes and our businesses base their, their, they're tossing stuff, what they sell stuff for on their overheads. Anybody, anybody builds a building or anything, it's usually permitted. Neighbors see the activity, they, they see that there's new structure building. The county is notified to raise the value of that. But how do you know the thousands of dollars, up to millions of dollars of equipment that's placed in our county through like these communication companies and investor owned companies? How do you keep up with that? How do you keep up with the valuation of that to make sure that it's being, you know, taxed properly? If, if it's not, and all of a sudden there's a, a whole new tax value out there that, that isn't picked up on and, and they're not paying, these investor companies aren't paying. You know, that's, that's, that's kind of being subsidized by cabins and light properties and businesses and everything else, isn't it? If that's not, are we, are we watching?
JJ, anything that's being built, no matter what type of building it is, it's going to be classified according to its use and then valued. So, you know, we, like I said previously, we come out once every five years to do the reviews or we are provided with building permits. Not all townships or cities issue building permits. So sometimes we are not able to find them right away. But as soon as we are told about those, we come out and we do a review like anything else. And they are valued and taxed, just like.
I guess, well, I guess what I'm getting, I'm getting at is everybody knows what a garden shed is. Everybody knows it, whatever. But like a fiber company comes and puts a $420,000 communication box sitting right there for all to see. That's a value that they earn money off of, just like if a person were to be selling groceries or cars or liquor or parts. They're, they're making money off of that. Who keeps up on that? And how do you know actually? You know, you say you want to look inside people's houses, you know, or you just assume the value. How do you look inside this equipment and know what value is actually there? I mean, it's, it's still a value, it's still property and it's still taxed correctly. How do you keep up on that?
I think you're asking, do utilities pay a property tax? And I.
They do, yes. And then, but to keep up on it. I mean, a lot of things have changed, just communication.
Yeah. Big difference. Get that, JJ. I think, I think they pay on transmission lines. But I don't think utilities historically have paid on, on equipment that is sitting in a, in a right of way, whether it was an old Bell telephone junction box or, or a three phase transformer hanging out of pole.
How about cell tower?
The cell towers pay. They pay over. A piece of property. One acre is carved out, they pay a commercial property tax.
Yeah, I mean, like Steve, it's a good comparison. Like you said, a, a old Bell copper pedestal sitting there. Well, now that's getting pulled out. And being placed with a, with a, I guess.
And I don't think.
Equipment for fiber.
Traditionally, the telcos have not paid on those investments. And I think that's a, a something we would have to bring to our legislators. Because that's not a local decision.
Yeah. That wouldn't help our broadband. We don't want to go there.
Yeah. I think, I think if that's something that we want to bring up the ladder through legislation, we, we need to talk to our legislators about. Yeah. Yeah. I get what you're saying, but I don't think it's been an item that's been taxed. But it, much like power companies, they pay on the large transmission lines and, and on substations, but they don't pay a tax on the line that services my house.
Okay. So moving on, just a few reminders for everyone. A property, a property's estimated market value can change year to year due to market conditions. Even if no physical changes have been made to the property, there is no limit or cap to the amount of value a property can increase or decrease this year. And the reason I state that is because many people have the notion that we can only raise values so high. And that's not true. Properties are valued at 100% of its market value as of January 2nd. Like I previously stated, the median sales ratio is used. Again, it must fall between 90 and 105% according to the Department of Revenue. And once again, our 23 values are determined by qualifying sales that transpired between October 1st of '20 and September 30th of '21. The assessor's job is not to raise revenue or predict sales, but to reflect the real estate market, what the real estate market is doing and how properties are selling under those current market conditions. Here's just a map, just to show the, the average residential increase for as many counties as our region put together. So as you can see, we fall pretty close to everyone else in the area, 21%. How do I peel my value?
Back to that.
Sure. We're at 21, 21, 24 for Malax, 23 for Iceni, 21 for Sherburne, 24 for Shisago. And that's just residential and that would be your average. Okay. How do I peel my value? The first thing I, I want people to know is that go ahead and contact our office. We will put you in touch with the appraiser for that township or city. And then you can discuss your issues or your concerns at that time. We'll, we'll go over all of the information with you. If your property hasn't been inspected recently, we'd like to come out and take a, and do an, um, an actual physical review of that. Um, once that is done, you can also um, make your formal appeal at the local board of appeal and equalization meetings or the open book meeting. The difference between those two, the local board meeting, the township or city actually holds their own meeting. So you, you actually go to the meeting at their township hall. Uh, the open book, they've turned that um, meeting over to the county. So although we do have a meeting time set up. The um, southern tier of the county is Wednesday here at the courthouse. So you can just come in anytime during that time and meet with the appraiser. Uh, the northern half of the, the county is up in Sandstone uh, next Thursday, a week from Thursday. Uh, the, the thing with open book is yes, even though we have those meetings that someone can attend. We have actually up until county board in June to work with, to work with the property owner or for them to appeal. So that's the difference. Um, I like the open book format. The reason I like it is because a lot of people don't actually look at their valuation notice until they open to pay their taxes. And by that time, the meeting has come and gone. With open book, they would still have time to contact us and work with us and adjust if warranted prior to June. So. Do you understand? You understand that? It was like, did you have a question? Uh, those needs, uh, the time in, the time of those meetings is listed on the bottom left hand corner of your valuation notice. Then if you're not satisfied at that local board meeting, then you can appeal right at the county board meeting, which this year is Monday, June 13th at six o'clock. Here in Pine City. But in order to do that, um, you need to attend your local board meeting. If they have one, and then you've got to call the auditor's office and schedule that appointment. And after that, if you're not satisfied, your last appeal avenue is to go to tax court. So that's what I have. I, I did send out a couple or, uh, you guys have a couple of handouts. One of those handouts is uh, the difference between last year and this year with your land. For the first time, I believe, I mean, I haven't been here forever. Your recreational land value, for the most part throughout the county is exceeding your tillable. People are not buying up the farms up in northern Pine County anymore. They're buying the recreational land. You know, with the unrest down in the cities, the low interest rates. People being able to work remotely. They have, they're purchasing everything up north and that's why you're seeing that big influx in the land values. Uh, I did have two people, although, contact me about the, the working remotely and they went ahead, they outbid everybody, they, you know, brought our values up and then they came back and said, I think we made a mistake because we don't have good internet service. But that's, you know, that's another meeting. So did you guys have any questions before I leave?
No, but I, I appreciate you taking the time because people, people. The people I that have the hardest time with our, our grandpens and grandmas who
Are in a fixed income.
$85,000 house forever. And now all of a sudden it's, it's beyond comprehension what the tax statement says.
Right.
Worth. And it, and in reality, it's, if somebody is going to buy that, it's probably a tear dump. You know, so.
A, another reason that we really want to be able to take a look and make sure that our information is correct. What I'm trying to do is make sure that people don't feel afraid or make assumptions about what's happening with values, taxes or our office. They really just need to call and talk to us and, and we'll be able to explain it because I find that even in these local board meetings that we attend every year, once we can talk and discuss it and explain to them why they're seeing this, it, it seems for the most part to be. They may not always like what I have to say, but they understand it more clearly.
This has nothing to do with the values, but on the pay and the taxes and there's a lot of programs that people can
Right, and so.
With if you've got rural vacant land and, and you
Yes.
Sign it up for one of these forestry programs, you pretty much get your taxes.
And that's a good point. And so what I always try to do is end it on a positive. So if you've got enough land and that you're not farming it and you would you would qualify for sustainable forest or the 2C managed forest programs, we do have we, I have a whole pamphlet that they can just compare and I help with a lot of people with the SFI A, actually, that's very popular. We look at their homestead situation if they happen. There's a number of different things that are available for them. Also, if, you know, and Kelly will probably touch upon this, but when we talk about property tax refunds and the special property tax refunds, so. We always try to end in a positive and try to assist them any when we can, basically. Okay.
Mr. Chair? And Laurie, you had made this comment and, and maybe our next presenter will address it, but there's no limit to the value increase that your property can have.
Right.
There are some nuances to the taxable market value from year to year that limit that, right?
Not necessarily.
There used to be?
There used to be something called limited market value and it completely phased out in 2013.
Okay.
And it really caused inequities because if my value only went up 10% a year, well, then I didn't get any benefit of limited market value. But if yours went up 14% for your, then you got a benefit. And so it really caused a lot of inequities back when that program was.
Wow, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
It was.
Another thing, I think that happened is as your home, your homestead increased in value. You're losing the homestead.
Yes. That has been a lot of people's questions.
That, that's making a difference. And I think we probably failed as a board and as AMC to really hammer that home to the, our legislators, because we can't change that.
Your maximum homestead benefit now is at $76,000. I don't know that any real estate in Pine County with a house on it is.
Right. So.
It was very few.
They're sitting down there with a $9 billion surplus and they can't help these, these lower income, lower home value of people. I, I think we missed the boat in, in driving that fact home to our legislators. How terribly important that is.
We did talk about it though, when we were down at the legislative conference.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I had two veterans approached me and their valuation went up, so they lost their benefit that they get.
Well, they don't lose it.
It was a chunk of it.
Right, so.
Thing old, just.
Anything over 300,000.
If they're a hundred.
Over 300,000, right?
That's if they're a hundred percent permanent in total though. So if they are considered that, it's a $300,000 exclusion. Yes. And if their value goes beyond that, they are going to pay a tax on the difference. If you're less than a hundred percent, but you're between 70 and 100%, you then get a $150,000 exclusion from your property taxes. So.
Yeah, I asked them how much they had to pay. He's, I don't know.
It would be on the difference, you know, so if, if they went up to 325,000, they'd be paying on the 25,000.
Which is a reason for him to yell.
So.
Yeah.
Now, the thing to think about with that though, is that that, that solid waste special assessment for 10 bucks, they're still responsible for that. So we had a lot of bets that would come into, they wouldn't pay their taxes, they wouldn't. And it's like, well, we don't owe anything, but they still owe that special assessment and that caused a lot of controversy.
Yes, they, they are responsible for the solid waste fee.
Yeah, or any special assessment.
Or any, right, exactly. All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Laurie.
Hey, you don't want to like listen to me next or you have to go.
Thank you.
It's going to be about our emails.
It's so riveting.
I know. I, that's exactly, I do have to go. This is to help though. And your email is phenomenal.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jelly.
Thank you. Brian, you're getting my presentation up, right? Okay. Okay. And so I am now going to talk about the other side of what Lori alluded to. In that the phone calls coming in are, my value went up 30%. Now my taxes are going to go up 30% and I can't afford that. So, but as we try to explain to folks, that's not how it works, but sometimes I get off the phone and I think, well, they stopped arguing with me, but I think I've just utterly confused them. So we're going to talk a little bit about that and show some examples of why that is not true. And, and how, you know, how the property tax system actually works. So first off, um, the county, township, city, school dollars. You guys levy dollars. You don't levy like a percentage, you levy dollars. You say, we need X amount of dollars to be, um, to run next year. Then those levy dollars are allocated out to the properties um, in that jurisdiction by tax capacity. So when I say the properties in that jurisdiction, so all the property in Pine City School District or all the property in in only the city of Pine City gets the city levy. And so they're, they're allocated out in the jurisdiction by tax capacity. And that tax capacity is, it does use the property's value as, as a basis. So the taxable market value times the classification rate. So taxable market value, that is kind of like your example man of your veteran who had a $300, $300,000 veteran exclusion, but now his value is 325,000. So his taxable market value is that $25,000 difference. Or folks who have a, just a regular residential property, it's their estimated market value minus their homestead exclusion is their taxable market value. And then we take it times the class rate. So in the legislature sets the class rates, we are now up to 62 different iterations of class rates.
Ooh, this is crazy.
It seems that, um, you know, that there's all these little niche things that end up with their own class rate. And so I have a table there of kind of the, the most common ones, the ones that we see in Pine County. Um, and you can see even with like residential, for example. Up to 500,000 is at 1% and then anything over that 500,000 is 1.5%. And so even within a certain classification, you have different rates. And so, um, you can kind of run down like commercial, you see, starts at 1.5%. So that tells you that commercial property taxes are automatically going to be 50% more than a residential property taxes. And those, those rates again are set by the legislature. So we take that tax, the taxable market value times whatever class rate is assigned by the legislature and we come up with your tax capacity. We then take that tax capacity and we look at I think my next, oh. We look at the entire jurisdiction. So that's, I like to use the pie analogy. So we've got this entire pie of in our instance, all of the property in Pine County. And so my example says the entire task capacity of the county is $10,000, for example. And we then look at, we've got a levy of $1,000. And then we need to allocate that $1,000 out by all the properties in Pine County. So I gave two example properties. So the first one is just a commercial property valued at $100,000. In this scenario, their tax capacity is 1,500 bucks. And so it's $1,500 times the tax rate. Which would say their taxes are, their county taxes are $150. And so they are 15% of that pie. Um, property B is a $100,000 residential property. So again, we go through the calculation using that class rate, their tax capacity is 1,000. You take that thousand times the tax rate and you get a hundred dollars. So again, as part of the entire pie, they're 10% of the entire pie. Obviously, when we're talking in real life, it's tiny little slivers of the entire county, but we use smaller numbers in these examples to hopefully help make a little bit of sense. Okay, well, I missed, I, one of my slides is missing, but that's fine. So what happens when values increase, um, but the levy doesn't increase? Because that potentially could be what we see. For example, a lot of township levies, they don't change from year to year. They stay exactly the same. But yet you've got these values now that are going up 20%, 30%. So here's my example of all the values are increasing by 20%, but the levy is staying the same. So what happens? My taxes aren't going up by 20%. What happens is then my tax rate ends up lower because I'm still taking that $1,000 that I need, but I'm allocating it just amongst a bigger pie. So you can see my pie there is that big, my pie is bigger now. But when you run through the calculations, because that levy is still the same, the commercial property is still paying $150 in tax and the residential property is still paying 100% or a hundred dollars of the tax. And their percentages of the whole are exactly the same. It's just that the pie is bigger. What does affect taxes? When do taxes actually go up? Because we know, we've all opened our tax statements and gone, whoa, what happened? So what does affect is levies. So that dollar amount that you guys come up with each December and certify over or townships in March. Values that change at different rates. Um, so you heard Lori talk this morning about, she looks at values countywide within a township or city within, and then sometimes she even gets smaller, specific lakes or specific neighborhoods. So values can change at different rates depending on what the sales are doing in that area. Or the property type, because again, like you've heard, commercial values have stayed very stable where you have all of your other values going up. So that does affect property taxes. And then classification changes as well. Remember our chart from back, back a ways in that there's different class rates for different types of property. So if all of a sudden you went from agricultural homestead, which has a half a percent just to, eh, to rural vacant land, I'm not farming anymore, which has a tax rate of 1%. Your taxes are going to double. And that, that's not a function of anything of to do with what the value did. It's another piece of the puzzle. So just to run through a couple of the examples, well, actually each of those three examples of what does happen. So in this instance, increased levies. So levies increased by 5% and our values increased by 20%. So this, this very well could be the scenario we have coming this fall when people get their proposed tax statements. And as you'll see, their taxes are not going up 20%. They're only going up 5% because that's what the levy did. So we've got the levy going up by 5%. So now our levy is $1,050. Our tax capacity went up by 20%, so our tax capacity is now $12,000. So again, you take those, you divide those and come up with your tax rate, which is 8.8%. And we run through the calculations again, property A, commercial property. So their, their tax capacity number now is 1,800 because it's 20% more. But then when you get down and take that higher tax capacity, you're taking it times a lower tax rate. So you're only getting a 5% increase. So my taxes on that commercial property only went up $8. And not the $20 like you were thinking when you saw your value go up 20%, 20%. Same with property B, your taxes are only going up $6. Because again, it's, it's only what the levy went up that you're seeing the increase. Next is values that change at different rates. So like I said, it can be because values in different areas are doing different things. Or, um, it could also be new construction. So next year, when Josh gets his, his tax statement, he's going to fall off his chair because it's going to go up like 4,000%. But, um, you know, so, so we, you, you'll see that, you'll, you'll have a bigger increase when, because your value went up extra. So in this case, I'm saying we're, we're keeping the same scenario we had before. Our levies are increasing 5%. Our values are increasing 20%. However, property B now builds a brand new garage for a value of $40,000. So with that, if you look at the chart, we've got our levy going up 5%, 1,050. Our tax capacity went up 20%, but then also we got that extra $40,000 new. So now our tax capacity is actually 12,400. So our tax capacity got bigger, our pie got a little bit bigger yet. And our tax rate actually came down. So when we run through those same calculations. So when we run through those same calculations, property A now, they still have their same tax capacity of eighteen hundred. And but now we get to take that eighteen hundred against a lower tax rate. Thanks to property B for now building that new garage. So property A's taxes end up only going up three dollars. But property B, because now they have this new garage, they're taking some of that away, some of the responsibility away from property A. And their taxes actually go end up going up quite some thirty six dollars. Um, and so as as the pie shows, when property B, they used to only be ten percent of the total. But now they got that new garage and so now they're a bigger percent. And so that's that's a lot of what you see when you have people come before you in the local board or at the truth and taxation meeting when they say, well, my your levy only increased five percent, but my taxes went up thirty percent, how can that happen? This is usually exactly what happened because they built something new. Or unfortunately, sometimes the assessor finally came around and said, oh, that pole garage that you've had forever, for some reason, it wasn't on the assessment. Now unfortunately, we had to add it. Or whatever the case is, those values are likely changing at a different rate than everyone else's. Um, though.
Or.
Or you have Kelly come visit.
Or what what happens happened is say, ag land went down and residential property went up. So people that own homes.
Right, now they are a bigger part of this pie.
Yeah, they're taking up more of the slack.
Right. Right, so my last slide actually gives examples of actual property taxes. So in twenty twenty two, if you look at actual property taxes, if you have a house, even though our levy only went up three point six percent or whatever it was, if you have a house, your taxes definitely went up more than three point six percent because you're now bigger, a bigger portion of the pie because land and commercial did not change for taxes payable twenty twenty two. So now they're a smaller portion of the pie.
And I think I think that is why we have more people, because values are going up. And and they saw last year their taxes went up quite a bit in their mind.
Yep.
So now they're thinking they're really going to go up.
Correct, but now everybody went.
But everybody went up this year, so taxes payable in twenty three should be.
Should be not as painful unless you were to change your levy substantially. Um, my last reason that taxes can change, as I already mentioned, is classification changes. And in this case, for example, the only thing that happened was that property B filed for homestead. So they now have a lower taxable market value because they get a homestead exclusion. So what happens, our tax rate actually ends up going up because our tax capacity got smaller because now there's a part of my value that I don't have to pay taxes on. And so when you run through the calculations, even though the levy did not change, our pie got smaller, so now property A had absolutely no value change. However, their taxes went up five dollars because property B's taxes went down. And so you can see property B ended up getting a nice decrease of twenty six dollars just by filing homestead. And again, their slice of the pie ends up smaller and everybody's else's end up bigger. And that's I mean, that's that's the discussion that happens at the legislature. Hopefully, every time they talk about making a change in property taxes, or at least we try to talk about every time they try to make a change in property taxes is if you give these people over here a benefit, that means everyone else is going to pick up the slack because the levy is still the levy that has the pie is still the pie. It's just that somebody else's is section is changing when you make those changes to a class rate or giving special exclusions or whatever they may dream up. Um, and so again, value increase doesn't equal tax increase. There are many factors that result in tax increases. And a lot of times, actually, those three reasons, a lot of times, they're all working together. And on the next slide, we're going to see that happen in real life. So in real life, here's your properties. So starting with Steve, for example, where he lives, his value for twenty twenty two went up eight point eight percent, which was actually a little bit smaller of an increase than other people saw. So his taxes only went up seven point two percent when our levy only increased by three point six percent. But as a reminder, a lot of vacant land and commercial stayed exactly the same. So Steve, he doesn't only get a three point six percent on his house. He gets to take some from Josh and some from JJ. And, um, you know, some of those other properties whose taxes ended up going down. Josh, for example, on on where your new house is, between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, you had a pretty big value jump. And that was because you split a little property off of a bigger property. And so in twenty twenty two is the first year you're seeing us valuing it as a separate property. So you had a huge value jump. And the property used to be agricultural homestead as well. So you not only had a value jump, but you had a classification change. And so you had a huge increase in your twenty twenty two property taxes. When the county levy increases only three point six percent, Josh gets five hundred and fifty seven percent. So he. Portion. Other hand, but then on the other. Which his value did go up two point five percent, um, which was forty five hundred bucks. But his taxes went down because you've got all of these other properties whose values are going up substantially more than than the two point five percent. So same with Terry, her value went up five percent. But yet, well, and Terry's got another thing going on. Her value went up five percent, but her taxes went down substantially. That's because she got rid of some ag land. Well, because she sold some agricultural land, so she got, she got actually her agricultural credit switched from her old property to her new property. And so Carrie does have a value increase, but she now gets a benefit that of a classification that wasn't there previously. Matt's kind of a stable one. Of he had a ten percent increase, taxes went up eight percent. And kind of you can follow it through and you can really see what happened to values, houses. Every single one of your houses, the the values went up, the taxes went up more than three percent. But then if you have some other type of land or property, your taxes went down actually for twenty twenty two. And so this is where it gets hard to explain to people because every situation is different. I mean, somebody would look at Terry's taxes and go, wow, it was, she she became county commissioner and look what hap.
Yep, nobody would ever see.
But.
Did you get broadband? I haven't gotten that.
Single situation. And it might because her value.
And it's this year, you'd you'd look a long time to find somebody's taxes that went up three percent. You know.
So of our thirty thirty thousand parcels, we have eighteen thousand that are improved. Um, that those values went up, but that means you have twenty or eleven thousand properties whose values actually stayed the same or went down slightly, so their taxes did go down. And so like I scroll through our system and look at them and go, oh, down, down, down. Oh, there's one that's up.
You're not hearing from those people.
Right, we're not hearing from those. As this shows. Up lately, but they didn't go up nearly the percentage as others. All right, that.
Will be confused now for another six months.
Oh.
No, I I find it just very fascinating and.
Making the tax shift to someone else.
And back to the, so you'd be seventy percent disabled to get any discount?
Correct.
Okay, so if you're seventy percent disabled and you live in a house that's valued at less than a hundred and fifty thousand, you pay zero, except for special assessments.
Right, and it applies on your house, fragile one, a residential property to ten acres.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Probation crew, are you ready?
Yes.
Do we need a break?
You haven't waited long enough yet.
Yeah, just think how smart you got today, though. I lost my phone, Kelly.
You want me to call it?
I think it's in the truck, I hope.
Okay.
You matter, it's at Kevin Coffee. I read nine o'clock on my agenda, but my mind was thinking I had an hour to kill until David called. As soon as his phone rang, I thought crap, it was nine.
You know, when your first house you bid, you would have a material list, the one you didn't go with.
All right, I think we're ready.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Hey.
Commissioners, other members of attendance. Kevin Glass, Pine Corporation Supervisor. So here to just talk about our probation pretrial services. A little history behind that. And so the position was added in November two thousand nine with federal grant funding. And then in two thousand thirteen, position was funded by caseload workload dollars. So currently, we have Devon Peterson with us. He's one of our pretrial agents and he'll he'll speak in a little bit. And then we have another, so he supervises the high risk and medium risk pretrial, pretrial conditionally supervision people that are placed on that by the court. And then we have another agent that supervises the low risk in addition to our other caseload. And so I'll turn it over to Devon for now to talk about the. We have the MNPAT process, so it's Minnesota pretrial assessment tool. And so that that was, oh, I'll let you talk about it and then.
The MNPAT started just over three years ago, right before I started working here. So we've been using that since then. How that process works is in our office, the the days are divided up between the agents, so approximately each agent does bail studies once per week. In that process, again, it's we go off a daily arrest report, arrest report that we get through email. We get one report at approximately five AM and another one at seven AM. And we use both of those, it just depends how many fails there are on a given day. You might want to get started earlier than other days. We open up the case in the client in our case management system for the offenses that are required for bail studies. That process is calling the defendant in the jail. Prior to COVID starting, we would go down into the jail in person. More often than not, the agents are still doing that over the phone at this point. And then we conduct the bail study interview with that client. After the interview, we gather background information. So that process entails conducting a BCA search, searching for any active warrants, both in state and out of state, conducting a criminal history search. And then we start doing the bail study once all the demographic information is input in the file. Also, part of that process is calling the alleged victim that have that would be assigned to that case. We're not always able to make contact, hopefully we are. And then lastly, finalizing the MNPAT and inputting the recommendations. And then we send the bail study to both the county attorney's office and the public defender's office. And then we, it's called e-filing, we submit the bail study to the court.
So on average. What's that, what's a timer hours put in per client?
Yep, and that was one of the things I was going to get to next. No, it's okay. I would say approximately a half hour to an hour. I think me personally takes me longer, but that's because I like to triple check things and I probably take longer than I need to because I'm anxious about missing something. As far as offenses that are required for bail studies, so per state statute, some of the most common ones would be violation of any restraining orders. So violations of orders for protection, harassment restraining orders or domestic abuse, no contact orders, any assault cases. So assault first, second, third, fourth, fifth degree plus domestic assault cases. Any criminal sexual conduct case gets a bail study. Threats of violence, which used to be called terroristic threats, gets a bail study. And then one of the most common ones in our area would be fifth degree drug possession cases was also get a bail study.
DWI fit in there?
Uh, they're not required by statute, but we do do them as part of our bill study policy at the felony level only.
Yeah, just at the felony level. But having said that, we won't do them on the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanors, but part of the gross misdemeanor statutes that require them to be on the monitoring, the REAM system, remote electronic alcohol testing, they will be placed on pretrial condition release unless they post the non-conditional bail amount, which is twelve thousand. So the twelve hundred thousand.
And then as far as I'm getting back to how long a bill study would take, sometimes things will come up that'll make that process. And then as far as getting back to how long a bail study would take, sometimes things will come up that'll make that process longer. So just for example, in the three years I've been here, I've had a few situations where I've had to call a federal probation agent. Because the BCA record search couldn't happen for whatever reason. So we're, I've called agents at that level, I've called the Federal Bureau of Prisons at one point to do a record check. And I think during one occasion, I actually made contact with the Sandstone Prison. Yeah, so things come up and delay, will delay the process and make it take longer. As far as talking to alleged victims. I think a big thing in the corrections field is we don't, we as an agent still want to revictimize victims. So a big focus is on, for example, what you don't want to say is when you're calling that person, I'm calling you because you are the victim in this offense that happened. That's hundred percent what you don't want to do more often than not, what it should look like is, hey, my name's Devon, I'm calling from the probation office. I'm calling because I'm completing a bail study. Part of that process is me calling you and just reaching out to you to make sure that you have the ability to tell your story. Anything that you tell me will be put in a report that will go to the judge. If there are things that you want to leave out, we can do that, but I just want to make sure you know that you can be heard and now's your time to talk essentially. And then we would give, Loanne Westerman is the victim advocate, we would give that person her phone number. Any questions there?
I get confused over probation agents that work for the state and the ones for the county and who the state doesn't do any pretrial stuff?
Not in our, not in our county, we are what's called a CPO county.
Yep.
So we have the DOC across the street, they don't do anything with pretrial, that's happened.
Yeah, we do, we conduct all the pretrial sites that are required and then some that aren't mentioned in the statute. And then so we do provide supervision for people charged with felonies. But once they are sentenced and it's a felony level, then they will.
Anything preconviction is at the county level here?
And I don't know if that's, if this is the time to bring up the funding piece of it. But you know that the CPO funding funds just a portion of the activities at thirty percent versus the statutory fifty. Pretrial work is not included in that calculation. So when we say the state's only funding thirty percent of the fifty percent, it's thirty percent of the fifty percent of the eligible work of which none of this is.
But we believe this is essential to making.
Oh, yeah, yes.
This is a better program.
Yeah, I, I just, I just think we need to be caught, just like property taxes, it's sort of convoluted sometimes. Even were the state to increase their funding to fifty percent.
They're still.
They're still not funding this.
Fifty percent of the. I got it.
Thank you, yeah, just to add to that, the, the state is also supposed to pay twenty five dollars. Reimbursed for every bail study that they do, and that's never happened, that's been unfunded.
I'm not laughing.
Yeah, no, I, and this whole pretrial issue, along with juvenile supervision, has been something and part of that work group I'm on was argued. Very vigorously this last year and a half because it's not funded, it's not part of the calculation. CCA didn't want it because by statute, pretrial release isn't required anyway. So some counties just say, we shouldn't get into that game, we shouldn't do it. This was kind of a handshake agreement with the DOC a long time ago that said, oh, you guys can take pretrial. Well, then when all these counties signed on and took on pretrial, then the DOC never, the state never funded. I will say this, some of the most dangerous work that we do, period. You know, I love that Devon's in that position right now, but it's, because as Kevin said, it's, there's a lot of people that are pending and once they're sentenced, they're felons. And they're dangerous in rural communities. And so this is some of, I believe, our most important work. This is also the stuff where if you see somebody on the news because they've been charged with homicide or whatever. Some of those guys do get out. Crim sex, for example, they may be pending. These are the ones, right, I say to Devon, I, I, let me watch that on the six o'clock news for the first time I hear about it. If it's a high profile, make sure I know about it. And Devon does a great job of recommending and making sure that these guys are, at least we're recommending that they get put on GPS monitoring. Which happens, I would say more often than not, that they, they do for those high profile cases, so very dangerous caseload.
So juveniles are still considered wards of the county, right, or the counties that, so we get all the juvenile stuff for cost anyway, don't we? On that work, we have to do it.
Correct, yeah, and, and we have, there's pretrial for juveniles too, it's just not a, it's not an official program like it is in the adult world.
Just, just less of them.
Yeah.
But pretty much whatever we do on the adult side, that's what's happening, juvenile side as well. We have a, a raid, it's called, similar to the MPAT. That when we do risk assessments for juveniles that are arrested and takes attention to see.
Sometimes they're the scariest because they make the stupidest mistakes.
They're impulse, they're so scared.
Okay, so just moving right along, factors that come into play when recommending release conditions, including pretrial, conditional release supervision. The main things that we look at, and this is backed up by the MN PAT assessment, because that's what it scores off of. Is there a risk for the defendant failing to appear for court? Are they already on community supervision? And then, then the seriousness of the alleged charges, including alleged victim input. So if we're able to make contact with the alleged victim, we always make sure we take their thoughts and words into consideration. So as far as recommending actual conditions, if we recommend conditions, we put them on the bail study. And then, like I said prior, we will send the bail study to the county attorney's office, to the public defender that has court that day. And then we'll also copy the agent in our office that has in custody court the following day, so they're in the loop in case that person doesn't have court on that day. Any questions there?
So can you recommend no bail?
We don't make recommendations for bail, that's, that's what the county attorney does. As far as the court process, the probation officer attends court. And then we answer any questions that the judge or the county attorney or the public defender might have. And then we, chrono is what it's called, so we input in our case management system what happens during the court hearing. So just keeping a record of things that happen in each case. And then as far as after court, the client can either be released with conditions, either with or without monetary bail. Or they might have to post non-conditional bail. If they post conditional bail or released without having to post monetary bill, that means more often than not that they're going to be on supervision with our office. So if that happens, then I, as the pretrial agent, would be meeting with them either by phone or in person. Sometimes it happens in the bail bonds in room if the judge specifies it has to happen before they can get released. What I'm doing when I meet with them for that is verifying their contact information, which would include a phone number and address. Physical versus a mailing address, and then ever since COVID hit, I've put, I and my office have put a big focus on getting email addresses down so we can reach out to clients that way. We review the court order with the client. We have what's called a pretrial conditional release agreement in our office, it's essentially a probation agreement, it just outlines what's going to be expected of them, how the process is going to work, and then they're given a copy of that if they would like one. There is a local correctional fee, we go over that with the client, how that process works. We talk about contact standards and we'll talk about that as we go along here. And then the last big thing that I always try to do is go over what's called role, role clarification. So what, what that conversation is, is just me saying, it's, it's not necessarily what I seek out to do as far as you might have to go back to jail at some point. What I want to do is, is help you. I'm here as a resource, but you need to be able to reach out to me and have those conversations with me about things you either want help with or things you are looking for resources on. So we, no one in my office or anyone in the field should be seeking to put someone in jail, that's not what we should be doing, we, we should be a resource for them.
So talking about the supervision level contact standard. So on the MPAT assessment tool itself, it has a low, medium or high risk based on certain points. And you can get those points from county history, warrants, little fence, things of that nature. They, they changed the assessment tool three years ago and they tried to take out anything that would race or financial situations, so there wouldn't be any bias in the assessment tool itself. And so that's how we came up with the new assessment. So based off of the low risk and medium, that's what we supervise them at. When they, when, based on the assessment score, with the exception of certain offenses, sex offenses are always going to be supervised at a higher risk supervision level. And some other ones, maybe a first degree sales. And those ones typically will be put on GPS monitoring for tracking purposes only, and the judges do order that. If we don't feel recommendations are appropriate, we just leave that our recommendation blank. We, we never recommend a monetary amount, it's always just conditions. And we leave that to the county attorney and defense attorney to argue what the bail amount should be. And then the judge orders that either non-conditional or conditional. Regarding to contact standards, excuse me. So we have high, that's two times per month, and these are just the minimum, I mean, we, we can have them report once a week or, or more. If warranted, so on a case by case basis, so high is two times per month. We, we have in county, we have out of county. So sometimes we'll get people that are placed on pretrial condition release from the cities. Transportation can be a barrier, so we'll, we'll still supervise them because they're ordered, they're placed on with us. Excuse me, and so we'll, we'll still have them either do a Zoom team or the phone contact. We're still meeting those contacts without them actually coming here and we're not driving down there. Now, if it's within the pick, we can transfer supervision on pretrial cases. And so if it's a higher risk, high profile case, we may do that. But if it's out of county, say Hennepin Ramsey, we're unauthorized, we, we have no authority to transfer a case on pretrial to those counties, only within the pick. So I am, I say any kinetic, shisakko. And then we have medium, one phone call, virtual appointment or in person. And low, basically the check in after court, tells what happened, and then they update any address, phone employment or any court information updates. Since COVID, a lot of that, you know, we changed a lot of the ways we did it. I mean, before it was always in person and people were coming to court in person, now everything's pretty much Zoom. And so a lot of the stuff is teams, phone calls, things like that.
Can I ask, um, yep, how much, do you think that you're missing things having it via Zoom? I just, to me, that's such a hard thing because it's not personal and you miss a lot, I miss a lot, how does that work for you guys?
Yeah, so, so the high and medium, especially the high, we're, we're still, so like Devon's, I think going on field visits today. In fact, so he's still going out there in the community, he's going to meet people in their homes. And you can kind of get a good idea of what's going on when you actually meet them in their homes and, and see what's going on. Because another thing, they can come to the office and say, oh, things are great, well, you go to the house, there's alcohol bottles all over the place. Somebody has passed it on the couch, meth around, who know, you know, you, you just got a good idea of what's going on. So, and if there's any concern or issues and then, then absolutely, we have them come to the office. No, and, and they also, you, you get that personal connection too, you can build that rapport better in person rather than Zoom or phone calls, things like that. So we mainly on the high risk, absolutely, and, and then like kind of case by case, I'm a medium and low.
Thank you.
And so then, one time per month, the, the two agents, so clearly Devon and Michelle will meet together. They'll discuss their caseloads for the pretrial and some maybe they're high risk, and then they've been doing great, even coming to the office, checking in, no issues after six months. Maybe we move that person down to medium or, or low depending on what the offense was. So, so they don't necessarily have to be on a high level supervision always. And maybe you have a little person that's low risk, but maybe we're getting police reports, other incidents. Maybe we're bumping them up to either medium or high. So it's always going to be evaluated on each month to go through the case, so we're not missing anything. And that goes with the UAs, the drug testing, high risk, they're going to get more UAs, more drug tests than medium and low. And kind of talk about some of that on the, on the last page, when, when it comes to the pretrial supervision outcomes. And anyway, I'll get more in depth on that. But ba- basically, it's always going to be random, they, they don't know when they're going to be getting UA'd or, or drug tested. And it's kind of reflective of when, when, I, I don't want to always say like, we're, we're trying to catch people not doing good, we want to catch them doing good. So if they can have a, a negative test, so it's no drugs, no alcohol, awesome, that's what we want to see. That actually shows then to the court and then may help them with the plea agreement. If they can show, hey, I've been doing good on pretrial, there's been no issues or vice versa. Where if it's, you know, maybe they're having drug tests, they're getting violations because they've been using drugs. May, maybe that's gonna affect their plea agreement another way, who knows? But that's something that plays in a part with, with their overall supervision. And that's something to look forward to when, when they actually do come on probation, you know, what, how did they do on pretrial? So that plays a part in it wells, and so speaking of violations, Devon speak.
So agents try to work with clients prior to submitting a violation. Warnings are given often, sometimes quite a few times, it, it depends on the seriousness of the alleged charges. One fail, more, more often than not, one failed drug test or admission to recent use will not result in a CR violation and like I talked about earlier, if we put people in jail every time they slipped up, like that's all we'd be doing all the time and that's not helping anyone. So I, I do give quite a few warnings to clients, but, but again, it comes back to what they're on for. It's about having that working collaborative relationship with them. As far as making, making sure I have contact in for them and staying in touch with them. I think I personally try to do as much as I can in that area. So I'll email parties, meaning the attorneys on the file, their attorney, asking for updated contact info. If I haven't heard from that person in a while, I'll send appointment letters in the mail, I'll email them, I'll try to call them, I'll text them, doing everything that I can to articulate that I'm, I'm trying to get a hold of this person and make sure that they haven't fallen off the radar, if you will. As far as e-filing violations and how that process works, I'm notifying the parties, I will submit the violation. And then I email court administration, just letting them know that one was submitted. Sometimes if a warrant was requested and we want that, we as probation want that addressed ASAP. We would need to ask it, ask that that violation be fast tracked, if you will, to the bench so they can make an ultimate determination on it. And then as far as how violations resolve, the judges can either essentially give someone a warning, a slap on the wrist. Meaning they just release the client on their prior bail and bond with the prior conditions. They can readdress bail at any point, so they could modify the conditions, including the bail sending. Meaning they might require the client to post monetary bail. So it's, it's fluid throughout the whole process, it's never set in stone. Any questions there?
So as Devon was talking about, I mean, we, I don't want to say we go out of a way, but in a sense we do to try to help the people be in compliance with their conditions. And so, I mean, we go above and beyond, I would say compared to some counties where they don't, we'll, we'll try to work with them as best we can, because essentially they may go sit in jail, but eventually they're going to become a back. So if they have drug, alcohol issues, we, we can encourage them, suggest, you know, have a chemical use assessment. Get help, what do you need from us, what resources can we provide? You know, we've had some of the most difficult clients are the mental health clients. And so connecting them with, you know, Health and Human Services or other resources to, to help them be successful in the community, so we don't see them back. One of the questions, I think there was, there was about like how much time is spent, so on the last page in two thousand twenty one, there were four hundred and seventy bail studies completed. Which is a seventeen percent increase over the ten year average. There were four hundred and seventy bail studies completed this year, which represents seventy, seven hundred and five hours or thirty percent of a full time agent's work time based on the two thousand, two thousand eight, two twenty eighty annual work hours. So there's a good chunk of time spent doing bail studies, they, they can be extremely time consuming, especially if somebody has significant criminal history. So our goal is to fill the gap in pretrial services, the court including additional information for bail and release conditions, determination and supervision to defendants with court order conditions during pretrial status. There, there was a fence that wasn't a mandatory There there was a fence that wasn't a mandatory. MPAT requirements. And so we showed the judges, would you like this? Basically, their response was. Anytime you can do a bail study for us, we want it. So I mean, they 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 rely on the information that we provide and, um, are very complimentary of the services. And and what goes into that, those those studies. So as you can see, I mean, the 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 bails just keep on increasing. So even in twenty twenty, so twenty nineteen, there was four hundred and sixty-two bail studies completed. In twenty twenty, even with COVID, we we still completed four hundred and fifty-five. Um, obviously we're up now since I think more people are out and about. And so we did, we completed in twenty twenty-one, four hundred and seventy bail studies. So to get, put that in perspective. So Shisago County, they have a population of fifty-five thousand three hundred and eight, according to their twenty twenty cop plan. In Pine County, um, in twenty twenty, we have twenty-nine thousand two hundred and three as a population. So we did four hundred and fifty-five studies in twenty twenty, they did a hundred and eighty-one. I mean, uh, uh, to me, that's kind of mind blowing of how many we're doing compared to a county like Shisago County.
Is it because we just do more of them or? Why is there such a big difference?
It it can be a number of factors. Um, yeah, you know, I would say the good chunk of the ones that we do are domestic related. So I don't know if they would. I I guess I can't answer that first, like as far as were they not arresting more, less, what 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 the issue was. But I know, I'm I'm sure the sheriff has spoken several times about how busy their department is. And so when they're busy, we're busy. And so every, I mean, it's just the trickle down effect. So I mean, they didn't stop arresting, um, people on domestics. I think, uh, was it step up that who facilitates their domestic violence programming? They they said, basically, Pine County, and I think it was a Sandy County. Still did a good job of arresting people on domestics where some of the other counties, they seen a significant decrease. So that could have been it, but still four hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty-one is, that's a big difference.
Commissioner, when you talk about caseload workload stuff. You know, given the resources, this is where I would put additional resources as in our pre-trial unit. I've had many conversations with with Devon, um, in the last few years of making sure he knows it's okay. That Devon, you have to prioritize. You got to supervise his high risk. And then to the medium risk. If you get to some of these others or they're Zoom or whatever, that's fine. But we have to. Get to the ones that we need to go and see. Because it's it's it it's such a busy, um, part of our their job that you just can't. You can't see them all. You just can't. And and the the flip side of that is Devon, what's your? Total caseload number today?
When I ran it this morning, it was approximately eighty people in the community, twenty in custody and thirty on warrant status.
Okay, so a hundred and thirty. And so out of a hundred, and so he doesn't like when I run numbers and I say, well, you don't really have a hundred and thirty Devon, you have eighty, eighty are on the street, right? But but out of that eighty, how many of those are high risk, right? You know, and those are the ones you want to focus on first.
And and so out of the four hundred and seventy bail studies, this is in twenty twenty-one, um, forty percent of those were placed on pre-trial conditional lease. In our department. And so some of those cases, I mean, they they don't wrap up in a month, two months. It's, I mean, some years. Right? So I mean, they they stay on our caseloads and. As you, as you can see, it keeps on increasing. It's not decreasing. So we we have some. And it just keeps building. We're traditional probation. Yeah, I mean, we may get more cases, but we can always do early discharges. And 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 or move them down in supervision. So on pre-trial, you don't really have that opportunity to decrease it because we we can't discharge somebody.
Did, did, uh, your case load go way up when they weren't doing trials for so long? Because people's. People kept getting arrested, but they were waiting for trial.
So it's, it's, it's never decreased. I I would say it's it's always, like like you said, because the trails, I I think they're still backlog with the court. And that affects our department. If it's their backlog, there's a good chance we're supervising that person on pre-trial. And 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 so a lot of it. So on twenty twenty-one, so there is, in the pre-trial supervision outcomes. With the with the violations, thirty-six percent missed court hearings, which. You would think, okay, we're doing it by Zoom. How are you missing court? And that's where a good chunk of the warrants come from is if they miss court, there's going to be a bench warrant. And and and.
How many percent? Thirty?
Thirty-six percent. These these are just for people on pre-trial conditional lease supervision. Um, and I would say a good chunk of it are people that are on high supervision. So the likelihood that they're going to miss, it's because they're on high supervision. They're going to miss. Court, they're going to commit new offenses, which thirty-five percent were arrested on new charges. And some of those may overcross the thirty-six and the thirty-five percent. People may be the same people.
Chair, we we drill down our our data to even, um, measure how many of those. That miss court, how far are they driving to court? So we we track that as well. So we can try to, is there trends, you know, like? In the old days when there was more folks living out in Lake Lena, you know, okay, well, it makes sense. They're missing X amount of court because they live so far away. We got to get some transportation for them. Now it's not so easy for clients to say they have a valid reason to miss because a lot of it is by Zoom.
Bad broadband.
Kind of like the same as they go to the, right by the recycling place or the transfer station, throw their stuff on the road next door.
So a- any other questions on on any of that that pretty much can concludes? Kind of just the pre-trial services in a nutshell.
What kind of stuff you're running into with the veterans? There's like. Ten veterans that run that.
So so those are ones that are on, um.
Like what are they on supervision for?
Yeah, I was just looking at this, uh, pre-trial supervision on that. There's ten veterans there.
So anyone that identifies as a veteran, we essentially check a box. So we know for they to track purposes that they are a veteran. That's what that would mean.
I just wonder what they're, what's going on with them.
Well, hopefully we'll have a better idea of that in in the coming year. Uh, there's been this whole Veterans Court Committee along with Shisago County. We've now officially departed. But now Reese is kind of going to run our own here out of Pine County that my office will be in. Amber is a veteran and then Michelle will both be part of that and will supervise the veterans in our office.
Good question.
Thank you. Thank you. It's it's all, I I I really appreciate you guys coming in, Jerry. Thanks for getting. It's so interesting that we, we do so many different things at the county that. The people that complain about their taxes, uh, don't have a clue.
Public safety.
Public safety is just, it it's a huge thing other than having a deputy. It goes way beyond having that white car driving.
That newspaper article too that talked about what you guys are doing and how you guys step forward and and above and beyond to keep people from going to jail, but to work with them. And see if you can help them instead of just prosecute them, you know, I just really appreciate it. It's very valuable for our community.
I think, I think, uh, the statement you made about these people are. They're part of our community. They're us. They're, they're going to be released back to this community. So let's try to make them better than they were when they got involved with whatever they got involved with. I mean, that's. To me, that's the key to try to keep them out of the system. Otherwise, that revolving door, we all. We all know, you open up the court report and there's some names that have been there since I've lived in this town.
I agree. And like when you catch them doing something and you let one go by, that helps your relationship with that guy too, a lot. Well, I'm sure you say stuff to them, but I mean, I understand. I used to work out there. You have to, you have to have gray area. You have to.
You know, Commissioner, some of that comes with experience too. I mean, Devon knows if if if. If Devon was on the job and on day two, and then he, that first week, he brought in every person who. Relapsed one time, the judges would kick him out of court and said, and they would call me and say, wha- what is this guy doing here? Right? That that's something that sometimes younger agents think that you're supposed to do and it's really not. And then Kevin touched on offenders that don't even live in the county. There's, there's no research that says if you don't live in the county that you're going to offend, you're going to reoffend more often. And so. That whole Min Pat tool that was done is trying to take out all that bias. Because back in the old days, that's what you do. You do a. You do an assessment and go, well, they they don't live in, you know, back in my day, you don't live in St. Louis County, uh, reject, you know. Uh, you can't do that. You just can't. And so, um. But and the other part, um, last thing is is, uh. Devon often will come more to Kevin and say, hey, I just like, I got this person who just blew. Uh, point two eight blood alcohol level. Well, Kevin might say, okay, what, give me a little more history. Yeah. And then the last time he relapsed, it was a point. Three, right? We're not going to give that guy seven times. We're going to do a violation and bring that one in front of the judge. You know, or meth, um, people that are, you know, repeat violators on meth or. We're going to ramp those up and and we can, we can do detention orders. I don't know if you're aware what a detention order is, but. A detention order is allowed by law where probation officers, uh, can detain. Somebody, is it up to forty-eight hours? Yep, seventy-two hours and then without a, without a warrant. Don't don't need a judge's signature on that. Kevin will approve those or I'll approve them. And then, um, you can have them released without a a hearing as well. But, uh, you know, we still try to get a warrant when when possible, but some of them. You know, you 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 go do a home visit and somebody's blowing a point three, you may not wait for a judge's signature when you could get that person off the street now.
So, so do we, do you think, feel we have enough resources, you know, if if? If somebody wants to go to treatment, are they, are you always able to, are they able to find? Treatment close by?
Well, we have several patients. Uh, so we we have teen focus in Mora and Rush City. Um, that's our contract. Community therapy treatment providers. Then we have empower recovery services that is right in town here. And we have ascertain recovery services in Sandstone and then recovery and hope as well in Mora. And pretty much all of them will come to the jail if needed to. If if somebody wants assessment, they'll. Talk to the programs, put in a request for a chemical assessment. And then they can come to the jail and do it. Otherwise, in the community as well. I mean, and I think. Some of them still do that you're able to do it over the phone. So you don't have to actually go there in person. And so that cuts down on the barrier for transportation. So if somebody wants help, they can get help.
That's good.
Any other questions? Thanks, folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? If nothing else, we will adjourn the committee, the whole meeting. Sorry I was late. I read.
Thanks, guys.
I would, I read nine o'clock.
Thank you. No, it's, uh, pretty nice.
Oh, it looks chilly. Have a good day.
Yeah, you guys do. Take care.